Please rise for the invocation by Reverend Whit Malone, pastor, First Presbyterian Church.
Let us pray. God of justice and mercy, we thank you for the gift of life. We thank you for the gift of this day. And we thank you this evening for the opportunity to serve the people of our city. Help us to act with character, with conviction, with vision, with wisdom. Help us to listen. Help us to speak with charity. And remind us that we are all stewards of your authority so that we might have a spirit of humble service. Guide us, oh God, to be the leaders your people need us to be. For we ask this as your sons and daughters, confident in your power, your goodness, and your love. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the Constitution of one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The purpose of this celebration is to promote the value of inpatient rehab, highlight the capability of individuals with disabilities, solicit professionals who provide assistance to disadvantaged, and renew our commitment to meet the needs of people with disabilities. Whereas RISE Inpatient Rehab Center has been serving the greater different metro area for over thirty years, this setting helps minimize physical and more cognitive disabilities and restore those affected by potentially disabled diseases or traumatic injury to help an individual. And whereas patients with the following diagnoses may qualify for inpatient rehab: stroke, spinal cord injury, brain injury, amputation burns, congenital deformities, hip fracture, major multiple bone neurologic disorders such as Parkinson's and MNS. Other diagnoses may qualify as well such as debility, cardiac dysfunction, COPD, and others, depending on other complications and medical records. And whereas five regional inpatient rehab centers located in the sixth floor provide an interdisciplinary team of coaches with professionals to assist with recovery and enhance the individual's level of independence. Now, on behalf of Hickory City Council, we hereby proclaim September as National Rehab Month. Let's have approval of minutes of the special meeting of August 27.
Second.
Motion by Meisner, second by Patton. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That's unanimous, all members are present. Motion to approve the minutes of the meeting of September 2nd.
I move approval. Second.
Motion by Seaver, second by Zagoroli. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That's unanimous. Motion to reaffirm and ratify on second reading.
Second.
Motion by Patton, second by Seaver. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That's unanimous. Any items to be removed from the consent agenda?
Move to be approved.
I'll second.
Motion by Meisner, second by Lael to approve the consent agenda. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That's unanimous. We have one public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Our only public hearing this evening will ask the city's planning director, Mr. Brian Fraser, to come to podium and present to council a recommended text amendment that has gone through the city's planning commission with staff assistance and ask Mr. Fraser to present that prior to opening the public hearing. Mr. Fraser.
Thank you, Mr. Barry. Mayor Wright, members of council, Mr. Barry, Mr. Crone, good evening. I was here earlier in the summer from the planning staff discussing petition TA 1402, text amendment. The city of Hickory would be the applicant, and we're speaking specifically to LDC Articles 6 and 14 and requesting to amend Articles 6 and 14 as they relate to both temporary and seasonal sales. And so we've had a month or two to go back, solicit additional public comments, there were none. We went back to the planning commission as instructed by council, and council did recommend what I'm going to be discussing with you this evening. What I did for simplification, and again, we had some citizen complaints, there were some concerns expressed from city officials, that there was an issue with specifically our temporary sales of basically itinerant merchants without any ties to Hickory, without any specific building ownership or lease or property ownership. Were coming into town, maybe not even getting a necessary privilege license, setting up shop, competing with established businesses, and then leaving without paying anything. So we decided to take a look at our Article 6 in the LDC, the Land Development Code, and we've broken temporary sales and seasonal sales into two different categories throughout the Article 6, which makes it a lot easier. And what I did for simplification tonight is to, anything that's in red is which we've changed or tweaked since the last meeting a couple of months back. Basically, what we're looking at doing is that providing that seasonal sales may be a primary use but are limited to a duration not to exceed forty-five days per calendar year. This would take into consideration things like Halloween pumpkins, would take into consideration the sale of Christmas trees and wreaths, that type of thing. Again, would just be forty-five days, we think that's more than adequate time for those type of events. Also, we're looking at city-sponsored or approved special events, they would be exempt from these requirements, so we don't have to worry about vendors who don't have a business in Hickory to sell their wares during Oktoberfest or any approved city festivals, fairs, craft shows, trade shows, and the like, as long as they have a special events permit, as is per procedure for our department, there would not be an issue for this. We also looked at and made reference with the Business Development Committee, they suggested that we also propose amendments to the text so that there would be an exemption for food trucks, that would be included in Section 6.2.21B. Those things are basically what we changed. Now getting into some of the nitty-gritty, and I'll be glad to answer any questions that you have. So basically, for the forty-five days for the seasonal sales, they could be a primary use, but again, they're limited in duration to time. Christmas trees, pumpkins at Halloween, the fireworks tents in the various parking lots throughout the city during the Fourth of July season. So those things would all be covered, they'd be fine. If you're having a sidewalk sale at a local shopping mall, that's fine, that's not a problem. Dick's annual summer tent sale, it's not going to be too long a duration, it wouldn't be more than ninety days, that would be considered a temporary use, they would be fine. Any carnival or circus or fair that comes into town, that would be perfectly fine. Anything regarding agriculture at all during the entire year would be fine, agriculture would be exempt from all of the regulations. What would be, not all right, would not be, what would be prohibited, excuse me, would be somebody who brings in a truck and decides to sell black velvet Elvis paintings, or somebody that sells furniture, carpets, paintings, what have you off the back of their pickup truck, maybe they got permission from that property owner, but they're not going to get permission from the city of Hickory Department of Planning and Development Services. So that's what would be prohibited. There's not much of a change, but it's enough subtle distance that as long as you're a business in Hickory and you're attached to, you have a privilege license, you're allowed to do what you want to do, you're in a structure, going back to the example of Dick's and the tent sale, that's perfectly fine. All city events and anything that's approved by the city through the special event process is also perfectly fine. So this would not impact any downtown events on Union Square, sales on the square, anything with Oktoberfester like that, there would be no issues with that whatsoever. And at the last meeting of the city planning commission last month, the planning commission along with staff considerations and our recommendations voted five to two in favor of these proposed changes as outlined tonight. I'd be happy to address any questions that you may have.
What were the two objections, the two that objected on the planning commission? What were their, did they give a reason?
Their objections was, they, in the minorities, went with the fact that they thought it was anti-business, that those business startups would be negatively impacted. One gentleman on the planning commission gave the example how MDI started as a fruit and vegetable stand, I think up in Viewmont maybe. They were concerned about that. They also mentioned the fact that if there was, you know, the mall, or for example, I mean during the summer, they have different tent sales from outside vendors, that would of course be prohibited in this. So they were concerned about certain property owners maybe losing some rent money during the season. But basically, their objections were that it would hurt small businesses that didn't have the means or just were starting out and weren't tied to a structure either through lease, rent, or ownership.
And I think the mall has several events during, throughout the year, so those would be prohibited.
Well, the carnivals that are there, the fairs, that would be fine. But I think this summer, they had a large tent for several weeks where they sold rugs and throws and mirrors and paintings, that would not be prohibited, that would not be permitted.
What about a lemonade stand? Can a kid set up a lemonade stand nowadays?
Well, I guess it depends on what local jurisdiction you're in. We don't have a problem with a lemonade stand, I'll leave that to the health department.
Right. I know there's a lot of things being involved there.
If an individual came to town and wanted to sell rugs or what have you and worked with a property owner, is that acceptable?
No.
No. Okay.
If they have a current business in town that they own, lease, or rent, and they want to do an event out in the parking lot or a sidewalk sale, that's perfectly acceptable. If they make an arrangement with Mr. and Mrs. Jones to use their vacant gas station parking lot, that would be unacceptable.
Unacceptable.
And how would you enforce it?
Well, we do have, we do have one zoning officer. If we happen to see it or get a complaint during the week, we would certainly address it as soon as possible, she's pretty responsive. If it's a weekend, you know, that would be a concern because we don't have anybody on duty on the weekends.
And I hate to say it, but most of the time it's going to be on the weekend.
It's like...
And none of you have my cellphone number, right?
Oh, yes.
I have your cellphone.
Well, maybe once in a while, instead of working Monday through Friday, we let the officer work Tuesday through Saturday.
It's up to the boss.
Okay. Any further questions before we go to the public hearing?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. At the public hearing, we ask that, as always, we ask that people not share their feelings in any demonstrative way. This is, we're conducting the city's business and it's not a popularity contest. Second, we allow, first, the people who are opposed to the issue to speak for up to fifteen minutes. If there are multiple speakers, we ask that they share their time in a fair way. Then we let people who are on the other side, the people who are for the proposal, to have a light fifteen minutes, and then we have five minutes rebuttal and surrebuttal. You will hear, as we talk, you'll hear an announcement at three, six, nine, twelve, and fifteen minutes. We have a commitment to hear anything relative, anything relevant that someone has to say irrespective of the amount of time. But we have found that generally enforcing this time limit means that we do not have repetition. With that, I'll prepare the public hearing open and ask if there's anyone who would
Mayor, city council, Mr. Barry, and Attorney Crone, good evening. I would just like to say that I am against the city trying to enforce restrictions on private property owners' property. Because if those property owners have given permission to someone to use a portion of their property for whatever reason, whatever items they may desire to sell, I look at it from the perspective that they are giving that individual an opportunity to earn a living, to possibly bring business into the business that has granted the permission, such as a grocery store, a gas station, of whatever they may be operating there. I feel that if you decide in this change that you, in my opinion, are overriding the owner of the property's authority to grant permission to someone that they do not have a problem with in using a portion of their property that they're paying city, county taxes, and have made the decision of the type of business that they wish to operate themselves from that piece of property. To me, it's like a schoolyard bully that wants to stop another child or another person for doing something that they have a right to do and not breaking the law in any shape, form, or fashion from a piece of property that we as a city does not own, but the individual who pays the taxes on that property owns it, pays the taxes, and should have the right to make his or her own decision on who is permitted to use part of their property. Therefore, I would say that unless you can come up with a workable change to this ordinance, then I feel like we should leave it alone and leave it as it is. It, to this point, was passed before it has worked up to this point, and for some reason you look at changing something that has been working and that has not presented a problem, therefore I say, don't change it. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak against this proposal? Is there anyone who would like to speak for this proposal? There being no one else desiring to speak, I'd prepare the public hearing closed and ask for motion or discussion.
Well, I don't think it's any shape bullyism, it's fairness. Mr. Lael's family pays a lot of taxes for a furniture store, and to have somebody come on a Saturday or Sunday and throw a bunch of sofas in a parking lot and try to sell them without paying sales tax, privilege tax, property tax, it's just not fair. And I move approval.
I take the opposite view, I think it's anti-small business, somebody wants to come in, earn some bucks, it's not a big deal comparing something that's so gargantuan to a small startup, and this really should have been brought up in a workshop, should have been the regular workshop that we do every year about text amendments rather than kind of cram something like this at the last minute.
These people come in and they leave. There are no guarantees that they're going to be around, there's no guarantees on their products, they come in and they leave.
And they're feeling a need that perhaps other stores, established stores, don't feel. There's a variety of reasons that people shop at Red Velvet, Elvis, and the Sunglass Hut and those places, and I just feel like there's a need, and someone's feeling that.
So often I see, and this is opinion, and I'm supportive of the measure by the way, but you know, I think of it more, I think there's some fairness and equity to the issue too, but I think it's also, as a council, are we going to, I think it's got a visual impact to our city. I mean, you cannot, selling things out in a parking lot, an empty parking lot, without a restroom facility for the salesperson, with merchandise out by the public rights of way, that's not the type of visual scene that I think, at least in my opinion, that I think's appropriate for what we're trying to do as a city, to enhance a lot of our corridors, and that's where these people want to be, they want to be on some of these key corridors. And I just, I stand strongly in support of the text change.
And you know, we all like to talk about a man's home and a woman's home, or their castles, but we have a lot of regulation that provides restrictions on our ability to use, or some people would say to misuse, their property. And so that ranges from parking on the grass in the front yard permanently, to putting cars up on blocks, to storing business inventory in the yard, and on and on and on. And that's part of the price of living in a society that tries to give as much freedom as possible and protect the rights of everyone. I don't like to see a parking lot filled up with merchandise that's just been dropped on a blanket and spread around the parking lot. And I don't think those, I don't think those people have probably gotten permission or paid rent for that right, it's hard to know sometimes.
I saw, just as a matter of note, recently, I drive home on US 70, there's been a vendor out there selling puppies in a cage on the side of the road. Puppies in a cage about this size, right there, on that main thoroughfare.
Which encourages the puppy meal mentality.
Which I called that into the police today. It just, I see it also, but that's not going to, I don't feel like there's not enough bite in this to take care of a situation like that and to do the enforcement. I just, I don't think it's, the enforcement's there for something like the puppy meal, if that's what it is.
Well, I hear all the arguments, I make a motion, we approve this text amendment.
I think Mr. Lael's made a motion.
Oh, Mr. Meisner, okay.
Excuse me, Mr. Meisner, is that...
Okay, I second Mr. Meisner's motion. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no.
No.
That is a one-nay vote, Ms. Patton. Departmental reporters.
First departmental report, I will ask Assistant City Manager Ms. Andrea Surratt to come to the podium. Ms. Surratt is bringing to council some great news of a grant application that the city in conjunction with Western Viewmont Council of Government filed with the state of North Carolina to receive a half million dollar reuse grant for the OHM typically known as Lowery Mill Project.
Thank you, Mr. Barry, or members of council, Mr. Barry, Mr. Crone. So tonight, we wanted to just share with you this good news of receiving this first and hopefully not the last of the grants from the North Carolina Department of Commerce. It's a fairly new program, and so much like our vacant building grant program, it dovetails nicely with projects that we are working on locally, but this Department of Commerce has these projects and these grant dollars available all across the state. But tonight, we are one of the recipients of that for transportation insight for that project. So because it's new, because it's different, I wanted to just go through briefly what is involved in the grant. So it's a grant or a loan, but not required to be paid back if your criteria is met, a grant to the city or to an applicant, which is a local government, that's then passed through to the business owner. And those grants are typically related to renovating a vacant building, or renovating and expanding or constructing healthcare facilities that'll lead jobs. So the state had a number of objectives in mind, and so for our purposes, it's related to the vacant building renovation. And so for the vacant building projects, they must be vacant for at least three months prior to the application deadline, and that's really one of the criteria for this grant. Similar to our vacant building grant, the eligible expenses are for major system improvements inside and outside the structure, so HVAC and roofing, plumbing, electrical, you can see the list in blue there. So those are eligible expenses that are paid for by the grant, but prohibited are things that are considered the normal course of business for outfit. So like just permit fees and telephone, you can see the list in red there, fencing, furnishing, kitchen equipment, even buying the building. So the company already needed to make the investment in buying the building itself and knowing that they have to redevelop that building, so knowing the expenses of that redevelopment through developing architectural plans. So it's not about getting the grant ahead of all of those steps and then deciding you want to do the building outfit, it's actually getting all of those steps met and then getting the monies for renovation. So this is the project, and this slide is actually one that Scott Millar showed you back in April when this project went forward for the incentives, and so they have a seven million dollar minimum expenditure for that project, and it may go higher, that was the number that was identified, eligible for up to eight million to be incentivized there. You can see the... You can see the footprint of both, let's see, Lowry Mill, the proper here, and then all of the Inaco Building and all of the associated buildings across the street maintaining, creating that campus. So, it's, not only is it a building renovation, but it's tied to jobs, and in this case, the grant pays for $10,000 per job up to a maximum of $500,000. And so, for transportation insight, they retained a current workforce of 151. They had to grow that workforce through this two-year period of the grant by 50 employees, and those dollar amounts for those salaries, in the contract, it talks about an average annual salary of $46,934. And so, that, so, a number of those, all of those jobs have to be in that range. And so, we received the letter from the state. We were a number, we were one of five projects that were announced back in May, and so, just as a highlight, so, you know, Beaufort County had a building and got a grant for, looks like a restaurant, Gaston County had a building, again, manufacturing, Lee County in Sanford, again, another, GKN Drive Line, another renovation there. Rutherford County, of course, had a large building there as well for a call center. But our, in our case, ours competed very successfully to get the maximum amount of the grant dollars that were available. It requires a local match of 5%, and our vacant building grant covers that local match, as well as the cost for the investment made by transportation insight. And so, that's the requirement for the state for the local match. And just to orient you on how we qualify, or how TEI qualifies for this grant, and us in general, this is the 2014 tier designation map. It's pretty small, but the green category in the middle, and here we are, Catawba County, we're tier two, that puts us in a category to receive the $10,000 amount per job created. And so, with that, then, we're excited about the ongoing renovation of that project, and this is the first building reuse grant that our area has received, and so, when we have other projects that are similar, we hopefully can apply and have the same opportunity. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Well, thank you. It's good news.
Yes.
You know, in conjunction with this, Mr. Lael and I are on the NPO, and Chuck is on the TCC. This intersection got the highest number of votes in the new criteria, so they'll be reworking that intersection there, which is very, very much needed. I don't know, I can't, Chuck, you know what the timetable is?
It's to be determined yet, but it's, the good news is it's got high ranking.
It is.
It's moving forward with some plans.
That's great.
So, we invest $25,000, and that's parlayed by a multiple of 20 to 500,000. And that's parlayed by a multiple of 14 to about 7 million. That's how we get a million dollars city investment along the railroad track from LR to the snack bar, and over $30 million of that on state tax credits and private investment. And that's what we've been, that's exactly what we've been talking about, we need to have happen here. So, I make a motion, we approve this, we approve this application for grant.
Actually, I think it's accepting the grant.
Oh, accept?
You've been notified. We've already applied for the grant, and now you're accepting the grant.
That's even better. I moved to accept this grant.
I'll second it.
Is there reason to ask for any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That's your end.
Next department report, I'll ask the city's principal planner, Mr. Cal Overby, to come to the podium, and Mr. Overby is going to present to council some recommendations from your community appearance and landscape, or your community appearance commission, as it relates to the community appearance and landscape grant program, specifically, they're asking council to consider adding some criteria to the program that will help them make their decisions on those grants. Mr. Overby.
Thank you, Mr. Berry, Mayor Wright, Councilmember Mr. Crone. Our staff, city staff, provides support to our community appearance commission. I, myself, am the staff liaison to our appearance commission. Over the past few months, beginning in June, I've worked our community appearance commission to better the programs with regards to our community appearance and landscape grants. As part of the budgetary cycle, the last few years, there's been $40,000 allocated for, to grant programs that the community appearance commission administers and council ultimately approves the grant requests. Of the past at least three budget cycles, the grant funds have basically exhausted within two to three months of beginning of the budget year. So, funds are allocated in July, and most times, by early fall, we've exhausted the funds. The appearance commission looked at this as a plus, actually. I mean, the program is getting used and is benefiting the community as a whole. But at the same time, the commission also had some concerns, one being that proper and best use of public funds, as well as providing that these funds are given to the worthiest of projects that have come before them. Most times, we'll get in a stack of applications, and in the current criteria, there is no scoring criteria. It's, it meets this, it meets this, it meets this, it meets this, and at times, our commission members have been frustrated that there's not a mechanism or a method to basically weigh these grant applications to see if it is in fact a worthy application, or that you just meet the minimum criteria and it's in the door. So, basically, what the appearance commission has done, and this is their scoring criteria, I gave them some advice here and there, but this is what the commission itself came up with. Came up with a number of scoring criterias that we're looking at, and basically, the slide before you here kind of outlines those. And your left column there are basically the categories, the measures that are being made. One, visibility. Where is it at the city? Is it on a major thoroughfare? Is it something people look at every day, or is it hidden back in a corner where no one really sees the property? The value of it, meaning that, is it a large investment from the grant request, meaning, are they going to invest $40,000 in a project and request $5,000, or are they doing the bare minimum just to get the grant itself? So, that's a consideration. The other is the impact. What kind of impact all the improvement's going to have on the area where they're located in? Whether it be along a corridor, is this going to be a catalyst along that corridor for other improvements to happen? These are some of the items they were looking at. And again, those two are the impact for an appearance grant, as well as a landscape grant, so they're looking at that. The category of alignment, how does the request fit into other plans that are in the city? Is this along a corridor, or do we have done a corridor improvement plan, such as our inspiring spaces plan that is being put forward now and will be implemented at some point in the future, or other plans that the city has? Does this tie into those plans? This is one of the questions that the commission thought would be worthy to ask. Longevity, are the improvements that are being proposed to be partially funded by the grants, do they have state power? Meaning, are we funding something that is going to be gone in a couple of years? We're going to do the improvements, and then it won't look like there was any improvements? So, that's an idea. And also, the viability, is this an established business that has a track record of succeeding, or is this something that we're just going to fund money into and it goes nowhere kind of thing? There have been several projects like that in the city where all great intentions in the world, and the grant funds were given, and the buildings are still sitting there. And I can count off at least three or four now that happened since I began working with the community appearance commission. The basic way this scoring criteria works is the remaining three columns to the right here, they're given one point for low, three points for medium, and six points for high, and then you basically sum up your points at the end. And zero to 13 points would be low, which you kind of moved to in your list there. 14 to 19, you're in the middle of the pack. And 20 points or more, you're basically knocking it out of the park. You're the one that the funding is most worthy of. That's not saying that we're just kicking these guys out of the door on the bottom end. Basically, what we're saying is, okay, you scored low. Here's some recommendations of how to strengthen your proposal to be able to garner the support of the commission and ultimately obtain the grant funds. And that's essentially what the commission's come up with. And what we're going to do, I'm using we as myself, as well as the commission, is, once we get the input from council that this is the direction we want to go, and this is the criteria we're going to use for this, then the next step is basically to take these criteria and formally put those into the eligibility requirements above grant programs. So, this is basically the sheet that we use to put this stuff into play, and that is what is being requested tonight from staff, as well as the appearance commission. Mr. Straw here is our chairman of the appearance commission, and he came in tonight for more support. And with that, I'll close and ask for any questions or input that council may have.
Was there any thought given to people that can get multiple grants as far as the ability to continue to do that?
Yes, and that discussion has come up some, because we have had properties that've come consecutive budget cycles for a grant. It's not rocket science, people understand how the program works, and you can always change it for them. That has been an idea that was brought up at the commission. Is there a, is there basically a timeout here? I mean, you got a grant this year, hold off for a year or two before you come back and talk to us. So, that's something that's going to be talked about also at the next phase of the process, which is putting these into play in our operating guidelines, which will then come to council for endorsement.
And is there, like, a need space, also thoughtful process behind it?
I'm sorry.
Just because you can apply for it doesn't mean that you wouldn't have spent the money anyway, that very large company that would apply for it and would want it for $2,500, they could very easily do that versus a less established business, that that would mean more to them? Is there any thought process on that?
That can be a consideration. That exact idea has not been discussed, but yes, that could certainly be a consideration and deliberative movement ahead, ma'am.
If they're in the low category, they will not receive a grant, but they can receive coaching to help them get to a level where they can?
That is the idea, sir, yes, sir.
And if they can't afford to go to the next level, say, can they receive some type of reduced grant opposed to the highest amount? I guess it depends on the project.
Sure, sure, and that can be a consideration with the eligibility requirements also of how that, what is that magic cutoff point? Where does a citizen no longer lend itself to a successful application? I mean, there's going to be some subjectivity to that also.
And this will be a sort of a guideline for the community appearance commission. This is not the sort of thing that's codified or that they're bound by. In other words, to Ms. Patton's point, if a project would be at 13, and you can see that, wait, there's really a lot of potential here, this is, there's a definite need, yeah, I guess they could, on their own, motion, approve a grant.
Oh, yes, sir, because at the end of the, at the end of the day, their recommendation is coming before the body, sir.
Right, right.
So, yes.
It's a great way, though, for them to analyze the projects, because I've heard members, members have talked to me about the reality of all these projects coming in at the beginning of the budget year and taking up the money.
It seems to me like it's actually a good problem to have.
Yeah.
I mean, what we're doing here is critiquing it and getting it defined, well-defined, and it appears that there's a lot of interest out there in it, and this helps to show that and help, this probably, this probably actually helped to get more people interested in it.
I guess, sir, most definitely. And have quality projects.
And competition's always good.
That it is, yes, sir.
Let's ask for a motion.
Send it.
Motion by Patton, second by Depp. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That's your end.
Your final departmental report I'll make to you all this evening, and it's the final step, well, let me back up, it's probably not the final step. Anytime you're doing financing through the local government commission, there's always another step. But it's the next step in approving the financing for the parking deck at the Hickory Metro Convention Center. As you all recall, at your last meeting, you adopted the appropriate resolutions indicating the type of financing that you were going to pursue and that you were committed to paying that financing back with the occupancy tax that is collected by the city of Hickory for the Tourism Development Authority. We actually knew at your last meeting, because we had just gotten back the quote from BBNT, what the financing terms would be, but we needed to actually prepare the resolution that is before you this evening. So, before you this evening is a resolution following the public hearing, again, that you had at your last meeting, indicating that you were going to seek this type of financing for the parking deck. Proposals were submitted to First Citizens, Bank of America, PNC, BBNT, and Wells Fargo. The city received one financing proposal from BBNT. The terms of the proposal are, the financing is not to exceed $3 million, the annual interest rate shall not exceed 2.94%, and that will be for a period of 15 years from the closing. If those terms have not been so favorable, the city could have elected to go back out and receive additional term sheets, but those being what we consider to be very favorable terms. Staff has brought before you the resolution, which will enable the city to move forward with the financing. Last meeting, you also received the bids, that we were excited about the cost of the project. So, staff would recommend this evening that council approve the resolution, which is Exhibit 11B3, with the terms that I've laid out with BBNT for financing of the Hickory Metro Convention Center parking deck. And I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
2.94% certainly looks attractive. What did we do to, we only had one bid, right?
Correct.
What did we do to determine that that rate was indeed attractive?
We looked at what other similar types of financings have been done for. We actually were estimating we'd be in about a 3.5% range. That's what we had seen out there in the marketplace, so we were excited to see something come in at just under 3%.
It's interesting that only one of those institutions even wanted to submit a proposal.
Why did we only have one bid?
Don't know.
They were the only one?
Yeah, we do a lot of work with BBNT. I don't know if the other banks felt like, you know, BBNT was going to offer us a deal that they couldn't match anyway. We don't know.
It's a fairly small deal as far as government deals are concerned, and at that interest rate, it's probably hard to get really excited.
Well, if you read the documents, it looks like, and I don't know this, but it looks like that all the interest that we will pay to BBNT, BBNT will be able to declare that as tax-exempt income.
Oh, yes.
Tax-exempt, yeah.
Oh, yeah, so that makes it a little bit.
A little bit more attractive for them.
Depends on what rate they're paying. Maybe these other banks aren't paying any taxes, so it doesn't.
Right, yeah, exactly.
Please don't put that in the paper. Okay.
We carried that, right?
You all are lagging a little. Motion by Depp.
Second.
Second by Zaga rolling. All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. You know, what I would just like to interject here, I think all of you realize and have noticed, we're talking tonight about the things that are helping our city turn the corner and look more attractive. corner and look more attractive. And we are, as you know, this is something we've been working on for quite a while, and it was a little slow getting started maybe, but it, it seems to be moving pretty fast right now. I'd also like to recognize the LRU students. Charlie, you want to introduce, or have them introduce themselves? And have it introducing yourself and give us your hometown. Well, I know you're, you're on the ballot, you've got to be here.
I'm Professor Charlotte Williams, and this is my community service, our community service students mainly, but this is our community studies class, and we're actually using the city of Hickory as kind of our laboratory, we're studying city government structure, how decisions are made, they talk about boost Hickory, Lynn is coming, Lynn Berry's coming on Friday, and talk to the city less likely, so this is kind of an entree to city government.
I'm Randy, and I'm from Stokes County.
Sherry Ken.
Stokes County.
Stokes.
Stokes.
Stand up. Okay.
I'm Randy, and I'm from Lynn.
I'm Tiffany, and I'm from Hickory, and I have Mr. Seaver from the last.
Oh, my goodness.
And I'm Brooke Keller, and I'm from Conover, North Carolina.
I'm Rachel White, and I'm from Hickory, North Carolina.
They brought friends.
Oh, they brought friends? Oh, okay. I'll tell you what, this is great, and these.
I'm Maggie White, I'm her sister, and I came to hear about the boost of the Hickory community.
Good. Good. They're awesome here. Anywhere they get more than 50 miles away, you're from Hickory, right? Okay, any, we do, we have one appointment.
I'd like to nominate Adella Ortez to the Community Relations Council.
And then the youth council applicant committee recommends Samaria Davis from the Hickory Career Arts Magnet School. Any others?
Move the approval of those nominations.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Lael, second by Mr. Seaver, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carries. Any matters not on the agenda? General comments?
I have one comment, I hope everyone in the next few weeks will look at Southern Desk and see that that's going to be coming down, they are proceeding with taking that down, that's going to be, I want us to be there when those walls come down, and the others, the building at First Baptist started to come down yesterday, so that's a real improvement.
It's gone.
Gone, and the code enforcement, I give them kudos to the amount of work they did, and our other staff with, over the years for Southern Desk, that's going to be a real boost to clean up that area.
That's right, so now we can talk about the progress from LR, hold a wave along you. We are, we indeed are making progress. You young ladies who came here to hear about the boost Hickory, feeling good about what you're hearing?
Yes, sir. We said Snack Bar, wrong area, yes.
They were not planted back. Any other comments?
Well, I want to thank all of you here, we're going to go into closed session now to discuss approval of some closed session minutes, and also, this is not on the agenda, was economics, Africanism, and economic development matter. Right, a motion, we go into closed session. There we go. Motion by Seaver, second by Zager and Rollin, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That's unanimous, we're going to go into closed session, and we will return here.
The only thing that I have.